Call the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting to order. Would please stand, I'm gonna have Councilman Stovall lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and this beautiful city that we call home. And we pray that you would lead and guide and direct us in the decision-making today as we plan for the budget. We just pray that your hand would be upon us. We pray your protection upon all of our first responders, all those who are leading and serving in our city. And we'll give you praise for it all. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mark, you see all council members are present. We have section of council member McKelvey, who's out of town today. And next up, we have invitation for public comment. We have one signed up, Mr. Brad Greer.
Mayor, council, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, I think this is the first time I've ever spoken to city council. But I, I do know each of you and friends with most of you. Mr. Donnell, you and I know each other, but, but we've not really been friends in life. Uh, but other than that, I've known each of you fairly intimately. And the proposed budget that's before you right now is a disaster. I, I, if, if the normal person looked at it, I think they would think it was a joke. In the economic times that we are in right now, the idea of increasing spending in, in some of these areas to the, to the level that's being looked at is preposterous. I'm a real estate agent. I'm also the incoming president of the Real Estate Association of West Tennessee, representing roughly seven hundred Realtors. And the idea that our city is about to make a mistake that is probably gonna increase property taxes at some point? Or kick the can down the road by borrowing money and increasing property taxes later? For some of the ways that we are looking at spending dollars is crazy. It's, it's not just off, it's crazy. This budget needs to be kicked back to the committee. The committee needs to be expanded. It needs to be kicked back to the committee and something needs to happen with this budget to change these dollars. Mayor, we can do better than this. And let's not pass a budget that is not gonna be good for the city of Jackson. Let's take a closer look at this thing, which we can't do when it's only presented to the city council three or four days before they're asked to vote on it. We can do better than this. You're a smart man. You're a smart council. Folks, we can do better than this. Slow down the process, readdress this, get more input, and make changes. Bobby Arnold, another friend, said at the council meeting, or said at the budget review meeting, that there are two ways to take care of the increase. One is to raise taxes, one is to borrow money. I would propose a third is to cut the budget. Folks, we need to do better than this. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. First time I've ever done it. We delayed our vacation so that I could come to this meeting. Please, let's do better than this.
Let me ask you a question before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I think you used the adjective crazy about the budget. Specifically, what are you talking about that's so crazy about?
In- increases to the percentages in the different areas that are being proposed.
Me any specific area you're talking about?
Uh, police department. I was for the raises. In fact, I talked to Alex Reed and said, man, we gotta give our officers more money. We're not competing. However, the idea of buying these additional vehicles, there's one. Uh, a homeless shelter spending a million or two million dollars of city taxpayer dollars along with the grant that's coming in with it? At a time when we can't even pave our roads? We're, we're cutting the road budget that's rattling our teeth when we drive down the road because we're hitting potholes left and right. And then we go to the tire shop and the very people who are paying the tags and paying the property tax are the ones who are going to have to pay more property tax if we end up going up because of this budget. It's just off kilter. I'm not on the budget committee and I've only had three days to take a look at it. You have only had three days to take a look at it. That's just not fair to you. It's not fair to you and the other council people to be expected to pass something before you can really grasp what is in that budget.
Are those your only two areas of concern, or do you have others that you just can't come off the top of your head?
It's, there, there are, there are plenty of others. And I'd be glad to sit, I'll stay more from my vacation if you want me to and sit down with you and go through the budget with you and explain those areas that I'm looking at because I would like for you to consider not passing it this go around, sending it back to budget committee. And I'll be glad to sit down and go line by line.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have first reading, proposed FY twenty-five budget ordinance. Bobby?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the, the budget ordinance on first reading, um, is for your consideration this morning. Uh, I will do my best to clarify some, I think, misunderstandings about the budget or misrepresentation, you know, about the budget. The numbers do speak for themselves. But the process and option forward, uh, we need to, I'll, I'll do my best to clarify those, those types of things. Just to remind everyone, um, if you look at the first page of the budget ordinance, it, it notes a couple of, um, TCA statutes there. Uh, basically, uh, we have to, um, uh, approve through two readings and adopt a budget for the new fiscal year, uh, by June thirtieth. Uh, the budget committee met, um, yesterday, no, Tu- Tuesday, I guess it was. Uh, this meeting is scheduled today. At least at this point, the second reading on, uh, the proposed budget for now is scheduled for uh, a week from today. Uh, I certainly recognize, um, the issues that have been raised about the, the timeline. Not going to, um, make excuses and just gonna share, share facts. Um, and, and that would be, this meeting that we're having today, uh, normally was originally scheduled for June fourth. So this idea that we're way, way, way behind on the budget, I think is a little, um, um, you know, a little, a little inaccurate. Uh, but we are, this meeting was originally scheduled for, for June the fourth. Those are the facts. Uh, the result of that, or that resulted from, uh, our challenges with the computer pervert, computer conversion and pulling data together from disparate systems. Uh, you know, we, uh, don't get into the detail on all this, but I think you're all aware. We had to work from the old legacy system. We had to work from the new Tyler Mina system, pull all that together, get that to the mayor, get to the, to department directors. We have a bottoms-up budget. Uh, we value and solicit input from our department head, which we did. Compile all that, get that to the mayor, get that to you guys. It is later than it normally, uh, might be. I don't recall the exact date. We sent out, uh, this is the second version of a proposed first ordinance that, um, was sent out. Somebody may can help me with the dates, but the first version of it was a couple of weeks ago at least. And the numbers have improved since then. So the numbers have been out there for, um, you know, a period of time. Maybe not long enough for everyone's satisfaction, but for a period of time. As noted on the first page of the, uh, of the resolution, we have to pass a budget by June thirtieth. It has to pass on two readings.
Let me stop you a minute. What happens if it's not passed by June thirtieth?
Still have to pass, um, you know, I would want to clarify this with, uh, representatives from the comptroller's office or others. But you have to adopt a budget. Now, you can, my understanding is there's an option. You can adopt the same budget that we're operating under right now. Uh, that's not necessarily the same as a continuation budget. It's just adopting the budget that we're operating under now. I don't, um, um, you know, that, I don't view that as a favorable option personally for, for many reasons, but you can do that.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at you because you have more expertise on this than me, but I wanna explore that. Not that I'm willing to do that. I just wanna know.
Sure.
If, if you, uh, if we wanna delay this, if we didn't pass this budget on the first reading, I hear you saying we could, we could do what?
Well, a couple of things. So this is just the first reading of the budget ordinance. So the ordinance today can be adopted if the council chooses to do so. It can be, uh, not approved today. It can be amended and presented again for the second reading, you know, a week from today. But if, um, uh, so that would be the normal process. If we're unsuccessful in doing that, uh, and, and mayor, you chime in here. I, I know there were some discussions surrounding this, um, a few years ago.
Not a continuation budget.
Not a continuation budget. Basically, you adopt for FY twenty-five the same budget we have right now.
If council did in twenty nineteen.
That's right.
When the new council was coming in, we had to adopt an amended budget.
Okay. I, I'm not clear on that. Both of y'all were talking at the same time. So get me straight on that again. You could do what?
So we could adopt, we could adopt a, it's not called a continuation budget, but it'd be the same budget as we have this year. Send that to the comptroller's office and then come back and amend the budget to what it is. And it's, it's what we did in twenty nineteen. The previous council adopted the bu- current budget, well, their previous budget. We had to come in and amend the budget afterward.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
If we don't pass one, then we're, all the state shared sales tax, the state funds, if we don't pass the budget, then we're at risk of not getting those funds.
Correct. Uh, there's one other point on the first page that I want to clarify, just to make sure everybody's clear on this. So all expenditures of the city have to be appropriated and approved by this body. Uh, and the approval for that is based on available funds. Available funds, um, does not mean current year's revenues. Available funds would be defined as current, current year revenues, but will also include, um, a reserve, a fund balance. Uh, that's an acceptable way of balancing the budget. So just to be clear on that. Okay. So moving to page two of the resolution, and I'm gonna spend most of my time addressing the major, uh, the major funds. We'll, we'll hit on all of them. Uh, the format on all of, throughout the budget ordinance is, um, three columns, FY twenty-three, estimated FY twenty-four. So these estimated numbers, we basically started with March year-to-date numbers and did our best uh, to, uh, reach an estimated June thirtieth number. Um, you know, uh, some revenues and expense items, for instance, do not lend themselves to a straight annualization. So we tried to make allowances for that. With that said, uh, you know, here we are at the end of June and the nu- you know, the, we know, we know a little bit more about the annualized numbers now than we did at the end of March, but I feel, um, pretty, pretty good about these particular annualized, annualized numbers. So the revenue for next year is, um, for the general fund is projected at ninety-five million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Expenses at ninety-eight thou- ninety-eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh, that's expenses exceeding revenues or deficit, if you will, if you wanna look at it like that, of three million, seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We have a projected beginning fund balance for the general fund of twenty-five million dollars. So the projected ending fund balance for this budget year would be twenty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. So just on a percentage basis, just a couple of observations for you. Uh, I believe that the revenue is projected appropriately conservative. Uh, I don't, that's, you know, that's my, that's my opinion. I would expect us to make this revenue budget unless something unfore- unforeseen, um, uh, occurs. So revenues, you have a question?
Yeah. That revenue includes six million dollars we're moving from debt service, right?
I'm gonna get into that detail. If you'll bear with me just a second, it'll be, it'll be clearer. Um, so that revenue represents an increase over FY twenty-four of four point seven percent. Now, I would point out, just like this year, like with every year, uh, you know, there are non-recurring revenues and expenses that can, I don't wanna use the word distort, but can impact year-over-year revenue or expense growth. So in the FY twenty-four numbers is two million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, I believe, or something like that, two point two, two point three million, uh, that the city recognized from, um, uh, closing, if you will, the exit eighty-five TIF money, right? So that's not recurring year-to-year. That's kind of an anomaly. So if you back that out of FY twenty-four numbers and then you compare the growth next year, revenues in the general fund are up seven point four percent. Uh, and that's comprised basically, essentially of, um, um, kind of our recurring year-over-year revenues, be it property tax, sales tax, uh, state shared revenues. Frankly, you kinda look at all of those in aggregate, there's small growth there, but it's kind of nominal growth. I would class it, if you lump it all together, I would kinda categorize it in kind of a one and a half percent growth in those types of, of, of revenues. But as Councilman, um, uh, Councilman Lawrence asked about, um, when we get to the debt service fund here in a second, you're gonna see where that our debt service requirements, uh, for FY twenty-five, uh, they decreased by around six million dollars in a little bit. So what, um, and that was, that was expected, that was normal. Uh, you have, um, you know, you have a, an amortization or debt service schedule for all the various debts that the city has back in twenty nineteen when we refunded all of our bonds and issued, uh, five or six million dollars worth of new bonds. When that amortization schedule was, uh, established for that debt and kind of layered on top of the existing, uh, debt service requirements at that time, this was planned, this was expected. We've known about this de- decrease for three or four years. It was coming, right? So there's nothing, um, there's nothing unexpected or unusual. Uh, we're, we're not behind, we're not reducing our debt service payments. We're still, uh, funding the required debt service payments. Uh, but in the debt service fund, and I'm gonna try not to get too far ahead, but since this question has come up. So in the debt service fund for next year, and I'll point this out in just a second, what we have done is we have funded that, uh, its balances, right? So revenues next year equal next year's debt service payments. Uh, the two types of revenue that are in there are the required amount of property tax dollars, and I'll show you those here in a second. Plus the commitment from the CRA for their funding contribution toward the Madison High School lease. Uh, so that makes up all of the debt service revenue. So the balance of the property tax funds and the balance of the tax equivalent funds that were in the debt service fund, let's just say for FY twenty-four, all of those have been moved to, uh, the general fund. So that's, kinda gives you just a quick insight into revenues for the general fund. Any questions about that?
So we have obviously enough money to pay the debt and it did drop. What about the twelve million dollars of the Madison school note? Is that being accrued for, or is that just sitting there for payoff seven years?
Okay. We'll, we'll talk about this when we get, uh, to the debt service fund in a little bit more detail. But what you're speaking to is, um, the Madison High School lease has a balloon funding requirement at the beginning of year eight. I'd have to think, maybe mayor, you can help me. When?
FY twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. So there's a nine point one million dollar, uh, note, balloon note, uh, that will, um, uh, have to be financed in some way. We can continue the lease, we can do, we have different options, but that happens in FY twenty-eight. Uh, the debt service fund, and we're gonna look at this here in a second, um, uh, the debt service fund at the end of FY twenty-five is projected to have a, um, an ending fund balance of, um, uh, let's see what that number is. I'll point this out again when, when we get there of, uh, two po- two point four million. So in theory, that two point four million is kind of, um, hopefully we can maybe build over that, on that over time, recognizing that we do have that balloon note at the, in, in FY twenty-eight. Now, so revenues, depending on how you wanna look at, look at them, um, I think the best representation because of the non-recurring nature of the exit eighty-five TIF money in FY twenty-four, kind of the best way to look at them. And, and in light of the transfer that Councilman Lawrence has, has asked about, are really up seven point four percent. Expenses are up seven point eight percent. So expenses in next year's budget are, you know, is exceeding, uh, revenues by three, uh, by three million dollars. Now, um, there are, uh, and I agree with Mr. Greer, uh, you know, there really are, uh, three options. One would be to, um, uh, find more revenue, reduce more expense, uh, spend down the fund balance, or have a property tax increase to fund this. Uh, just had these discussions with, with the mayor and is reflected in this, um, proposed budget ordinance. The recommendation is to, uh, spend down, in this ordinance is to spend down, uh, some of our reserve funds to fund this proposed budget for next year. Now, that raised the question, uh, had the opportunity to speak to some of you all individually. Uh, we discussed this at the budget committee, um, on, on Tuesday. Uh, I know in previous meetings, there's been quite a bit of a discussion about, uh, I appreciate former Councilman Taylor and the previous budget committee back when the mayor reconstituted the budget committee back in nineteen or twenty, whenever that was. Uh, the committee looked at and selected some financial metrics for the city to kind of measure our financial performance by. These happen to be metrics that were developed and adopted by the comptroller of the state of Ohio. That's where these metrics come from. Uh, I've included, um, um, the kind of, um, the narrative about what these metrics mean and the report for our city that, that we prepared through FY twenty-three. And I'm gonna address those for you because I know this is an important question. But before I do, I, I elected to kind of take a little bit, uh, what I believe, um, simpler approach to measuring the impact of this. So let, let me be clear to begin with and tell you that, um, fund balance is not cash, okay? Fund balances are different between all of our assets and all of our liabilities. It's sort of a proxy, if you will, for cash, but it is not cash. I wanna be clear about that. Uh, I think a good way, based on my professional experience, to kind of look at things like this has been, well, what is the expense per day for the city of Jackson, right? That's one way of looking at it. So I, I think all, I hope all of you found the handout that I left you this morning. Uh, okay. So if you go back and look for the fiscal year twenty-three, the calendar day expense per day for the city of Jackson is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seventy-five dollars. Now, that's spread out over a whole calendar year. Obviously, it's four or less, you know, different times through the year. And, and FY twenty-four, that number increased from two hundred and thirty-nine thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. In this FY twenty-five budget, that increases from two hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars. So if you take that expense per calendar day and you look at the available fund balance and you try to figure out, well, how many days of expense is, is in the fund balance, right? That's, that's really a better way of looking at it than thinking, well, the fund balance needs to be twenty-eight or twenty-nine percent or whatever. So if you do that math, and you all have that, uh, expense days in fund balance in FY twenty-three were one hundred and six days. Expense days in fund balance for FY twenty-four dropped to a hundred. And this budget, it would drop to eighty-one days of expense in the fund, in the fund balance. Now, there have been discussions about the metric that's been talked about previously. Fund balance as a percent of general fund expenses, what does that need to be? You know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, you know, whatever. For instance, let me give you those numbers. Uh, you have it in your handout, but, uh, that measurement, uh, fund balance is, is a percent of expense was twenty-eight point nine in FY twenty-one. It dropped to twenty-seven point four in FY twenty-four. It's projected to drop to twenty-two point three in FY twenty, uh, FY twenty-five. Now, I, I'm gonna show you the metrics. We're still in the green, uh, on those metrics, uh, and we'll go over those in shortly.
Let me stop you one minute. Give me, give me those percentages again.
Sure.
I think you started twenty-one or twenty-two?
Yeah. So it starts in twenty-three.
Uh-huh, twenty-three.
You should have them in another handout up there, but I'll give them to you.
All right.
And twenty-three was twenty-eight point nine.
Okay.
Twenty-four, twenty-seven point four. And in the proposed budget, twenty-two point three. Now, if you, recognizing that, that, um, uh, fund balance is kind of a proxy for cash, right? Not cash. It's fund balance is assets less liabilities, right? Okay. But it's kind of a proxy, if you will, for cash. This budget calls for, uh, eighty-one days of expense per day in fund balance in this budget. Now, eighty-one days is just short of, um, three months. Uh, when, you know, the, the thing's just kind of been tossed around. When we've used the other metric is, you know, hey, you want two or three months reserves. Well, this, this is kind of eighty, eighty-one days is where this number is. So let me, um, if you'll look at the, um, handout I left you this morning. And, uh, I, I apologize. I, I was not smart enough early this morning to get your copies to print in color. Uh, but, uh, we're, yeah, I, I, but if you'll look at the, uh, well, first off, you can look at the, this, this part. It's got, got the numbers on it. And look at metric, uh, metric number two, which is, uh, unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And this goes all the way back to what year is that? Fifteen, all the way through twenty-three. And this is the number, this is our ending fund balance number for those various years. And you can see, uh, the changes that have resulted from that. If you look at metric number four, it says change in general fund, unassigned fund balance. This goes back all the way to sixteen. And you see, you can see, you know, some, you, like sixteen, it went down, I don't know what time reading that, whatever that is, eighteen percent. Uh, twenty seventeen, it went up eleven and up one and kind of flat. Uh, so you can see the change in that percentage.
Mr. Bobby, can you put that up on the, we can't see that.
You all, I, I sent this out to you all.
No, I sent it this morning. I sent it to you.
I sent the spreadsheet also out, the indicators.
This morning?
No, it was several weeks ago.
Okay.
We can resend that out. If you have a digital copy of it.
Yeah. Let, let me, we can. Let me, let me read, kind of continue one more time. So those two metrics, those two metrics that I described, um, in your report there, if you'll look on, uh, page, uh, page twelve of the report where it talks about description of the indicators. They're numbered, beginning one and forward. This is indicator number two. And this is the indicator that says unassigned fund balance of the general fund. It's a component of equity and it goes on to talk about the different components of equity. But here's an important, here's the important part, what it means. This indicator identifies when an entity has a declining or negative unassigned fund balance. Why is this important? This indicator identifies if a fund balance is available for unrestricted purposes, uh, emergencies, those types of things. We, you all can understand why that's important. A critical outlook, you know, if we fell into the critical outlook category, we would have zero or negative declines in fund balance. That would put us in the red, if you will, in the critical, in the measurement. A cautionary outlook is a decline between the current and the prior year of more than one percent. So this would put us between this year and next year into the cautionary category, if that, if everybody's with me on that. And if you look at indicator number four, which is the indicator that measures change in general fund, general fund, unassigned fund balance. Um, it kind of talks about what that means, why it's important. Here's what it says about critical outlook. The current period and at least two of the previous three periods reflecting a zero or negative amount in unassigned fund balance. Obviously, that's a critical situation if you have that. Or a rapidly declining trend defined as a decline in each of the last three periods with a drop of greater than twenty percent. Well, you know, our, our fund base has dropped this measure the last three years, nowhere near twenty percent. A cautionary outlook, a declining trend defined as a decline in each of the last three years with a drop of ten to twenty percent. So I hope that provides you all a little insight on where this proposed budget. And I would certainly hope, we have a history of performing better than our budget. I hope that would be the case next year. And if we perform at this budget, that kind of gives you some idea of where we would end up in these important metrics. Does that, does that help or not confuse your words?
Questions so far?
I just wanna take a second to thank you, Bobby, and your department. None of us are happy for our, matter of fact, I'm extremely upset. But y'all have faced some real obstacles. That doesn't relieve you the responsibility, but, but, uh, don't take this personally. We appreciate what you and your staff's done.
Well, I appreciate you very much. I mean, I, we're, we're here to help you all as best we can. And let me get through the rest of this, uh.
Councilman Wallace has a question. Mr. Arnold, the question that I had yesterday, if this is the appropriate time to ask. When we dip into the fund balance, there's a grading system that we are looked upon. Can you answer that now or is this the appropriate time?
Well, no, it's fine to ask. I think what you're referring to is actually how this might impact our rating agency and our credit rating, right? If we were to pursue any type of debt issue to fund the capital comments, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Of course, that is a, that is a very detailed, wide spectrum of a review that determines your, your credit rating. The last official review we had, the City of Jackson had a double A credit rating. This would have been back in twenty nineteen. And I speak with representatives from the rating agencies, you know, once or twice a year or more. And we have a phone conversation. They receive our financial statements. Obviously, if, if you have a steady or an increasing measurement of, of unassigned fund balance or some of these other ratios, that's going to be a positive. If you have, you know, a declining trend, that could be a negative. When our declining trend falls within the parameters and of this database, I would think when you look at Jackson, the city, what we're doing, anticipated and hopeful growth that we have, other things that go into that, I would certainly hope that what we're proposing right now would not have a negative impact on our credit rating. I don't think that it would. But, you know, it, it's obviously something they would look at and they would ask questions about. You know, what do you, why is this? And what are your plans? You know, those types of things. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's refocus, we covered a lot, but, and this is the first fund, but the rest of this will go much, much quicker. Let's refocus on, on the resolution itself or the ordinance itself. That's really all of my comments right now on the general fund. Let's move to, to the next fund, which is the pension fund. And just for everybody, as a reminder for everybody what this is, this is not TCRS. This is the old pension plan for the city. It has a small number, I think probably less than twenty or twenty-five members in this pension plan now. You all, the city council is the pension committee for the city. A couple of years ago, the pension committee voted to fund the retirees under this old plan with annual increases the same as TCRS receives, right? So that happens to be three percent this year, so we've increased these contributions by three percent for next year. Okay. Community Development Fund, top of page three. This is, continues to be a work in progress. But this essentially is the fund where we account for the administration of our CDBG grant that is outsourced or handled by the Jackson Housing Authority. That's kind of what this is. Solid Waste Fund, the next fund on page three. Looking at the, the revenue line, it's, it's basically flat. Actually, a small decrease over projected revenues for, for this year, but it's kind of in, in material, in, immaterial decrease. On the expense side, it can be a little confusing. If you look at expenses, twelve point seven million in twenty-three. It jumped to sixteen million in twenty-four, where there's a couple of things happened in twenty-four. One was our contract for landfill services and other services that are subject to consumer privacy. I'm not sure what, I can't remember. Okay, yeah. There's provisions in the contract for inflation or cost increases that are passed along to us. So we received large increases. You know, you recall inflation at this particular time was really high in the country. So, so expenses jumped up to fourteen point eight million in FY twenty-four. Another reason for that, Solid Waste Fund, they fund their own capital, right? So they had a heavy requirement year for capital in FY twenty-four. In fact, their capital in FY twenty-five dropped seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. It went from nine hundred thousand back down to two hundred thousand, round numbers, right? Landfill costs, the fees we have to pay the operator of the landfill because of those inflationary provisions in the contract, it was backed down for FY twenty-five, right, by about eight hundred thousand dollars. So that kind of explains the fluctuation in their expenses from year to year. The other change for FY twenty-five is, I know you're all familiar with the new three-one-one call center. That cost is recognized in the solid waste fund. That's about three hundred thousand dollars a year or something like that. But basically, the solid waste fund for next year is no rate increases or anything like that. They're basically budgeted a very small deficit at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Any questions about solid waste? No? Okay, on the next page, Police Drug Fund. That's just the JPD Police Drug Fund. It's at the top. These numbers come from the police department. I really don't have any comment on, on those. These funds are restricted on how they can be used. The Metro Drug Fund at the bottom of the page, just as a reminder to everyone, we started the process in FY twenty-three, toward the end of twenty-three, of transitioning from a metro drug force model, which involved the police department and the Mass County Sheriff's Department, to a judicial district-wide drug fund, which brought in the other cities and counties in the judicial district and the AG office. They got a grant. You might remember the city, Metro Drug Fund, city and county funded some seed money for that. So, so there is no budget. That budget is, is administered by, for FY twenty-five, that budget's administered by the Attorney General's Office. Okay?
Bobby?
Yeah.
Did you go over Public Works?
Again?
Did you, did you discuss that earlier?
I did. But I, you want me to go over that again?
No.
When you say public works, you mean solid waste? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm, we went through solid waste, and so Public Works is, under that was what you're talking about.
Well, I'm not sure how you define public work. Public Works is in the general fund, right?
Page three is where it is.
Yeah, page three.
Page three says appropriation Public Works on there, and it goes, so it's, it's in line with page three. Under solid waste is appropriation Public Works.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's just, that's, that's a format issue.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, actually, Councilman McMillian, the recommended comptroller's website, or not website, the ordinance, they like for you to categorize expenses by certain types of expense. So expense in the solid waste fund, from the way they like to see this prepared, is called Public Works expense. So, yeah. Does that help? Okay. All right. So I'm on page five, Debt Service Fund. We talked quite a bit about debt service earlier. I would just, you can see that revenues and expenses next year are the same. The revenues are comprised of a portion of property tax, plus there's a projected funding from the CRA for the Madison lease of about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. The expense side of it is the required debt service that we're committed to for next year. We project at the end of next year, there'll be a fund balance in the debt service fund of two million, right at two point four million. And I'll remind you about the Madison note that we discussed earlier that happens in twenty twenty-eight.
Bobby, what would be a good fund balance percent of a debt?
Well, you know, that, that varies city, from, from city to city, right? So when we've had discussions about fund balances here, it's, we've primarily been restricted to the, to, to the general fund. I do know from having researched and looked at some other cities, their fund balance policy, you see everything from we want three months' worth of debt service payments, we want a half a year's worth of debt service payments, or we want one full year's worth of debt service payments. So it's, it just varies from, from, from city to city.
Would it ever, wait, Larry, no, go ahead. Would it ever be a percentage of the budget that would be acceptable?
Yeah, yeah, we could develop our own policy. Now, this came up in the Budget Committee on, on, on Tuesday. So the city, we're required by the comptroller's office and the rating agencies, Councilman Wallace, to have a, excuse me, to have a debt service policy, which we do have. There's, it's. And if I recall, Mayor, this has been, this has been, this has been revised since you've been in.
Yes, Kansas City, I think twenty-seven percent of revenue.
Yeah, that's one of those. Well, the debt policy is much more than that. It's a policy statement, and it talks about goals and objectives and structure of debt and different kinds of debt that are authorized for the city and so forth. But what, kind of what you guys are asking about and the mayor's speaking to is, the city's annual general obligation debt service as a percentage of the city's property tax revenue, which it includes regular property taxes, pilot payments, and IDB pilots, so all taxes basically, shall not exceed twenty-three percent. However, the debt limit may be exceeded up to five percent increment based on, you know, things necessary to address public health, public safety, emergencies, it's things like that. So basically, what that's saying is that our annual debt service, not our total debt, right? That's a bigger number, that's a different number. But the payments each year on our debt cannot exceed twenty-three percent of our total property taxes, not, not a budget of the property.
Not sales tax? Is sales tax included in it?
Just property taxes.
Just property taxes.
I didn't see it. Is our total debt about fifty-two million?
Something like that. I, I can, it's, our debt.
Where do we stand today and then proposed?
Barry, we just want a second.
This percentage?
I don't know. I know we got fifty-two million dollars of debt.
So our debt, our debt, you're, you're close. So the city's debt at the end of FY twenty-three, so a year ago, right? So this doesn't include the payments we made this year, which are substantial, was sixty-one point three million at the end of twenty-three. And so you, you won't be far off with fifty-one or fifty-two million, yeah.
I added them up, it just wasn't a summary there to compare.
Based on, you know, just, I've not looked at every city, but based on what I know about, about some other cities, our, our, our debt load is low.
So what percentage would it be based on property tax?
You're, you're.
What would our percentage be?
Well, well, so, so property taxes, round numbers are thirty, thirty-seven million or so, so. And, you know, I'm not sure I got, I got pilot, I don't know what I was at. But let's just say thirty, thirty-seven million's a good number, so. So that would be an annual debt service of about eight point five million. So our debt service this year is six point one million, as just, you know, as an, as an example. Yeah. Now, you do understand a couple of things about debt, because this, this, this might, this might come up, I don't know. But there's a process you have to go through with the comptroller's office to get your debt approved. And it's not a simple two-day approval process. That's number one. You know, number two, this debt policy that we're talking about is our, is an internal policy. It's not a policy or a limit set by the comptroller's office. It's one that our city has set on ourselves, right? So that, you know, there's, there's wiggle room in there if we chose to amend the policy. Okay. Did that help?
Kind of.
Kind of. Well, but what our policy says, based on the numbers I use.
You know, when you look at your budget, if we know that our income from, from taxes is X amount, what percentage is our, our debt? And is it within the metrics that are a healthy city?
Maybe it would help if you say, here's X amount is the tax for property tax and X amount is how much comes back to the city. It's what we did a couple of years ago that helped us when we didn't have to change and raise the tax rate.
I, I think, Councilman McMillian, what you might be asking is, based on our city's revenues and expenses, is fifty-two million dollars in debt a reasonable number?
Yes.
Based on my understanding of other cities, it's very reasonable. I'm, I'm very confident that our city, should we ever elect to pursue a debt, is we have debt capacity. There's, there's, and I'm, I'm very confident of that. Not exactly how much it is when you go through the rating agency process. There's a lot of variables that go into calculating that number.
If we don't pass a budget, does that affect our credit rating basically?
I can, you know, this is, I'm speaking my personal opinion here. I'm not trying to speak for the mayor. And I don't mean to come across high pressure or anything like that. I cannot think of any favorable impact of not passing a budget and having a, having to re-adopt the current year budget. That's not going to be viewed favorably by anyone.
And they would care because?
They, they would, they would care because normally, you know, a new budget is, reflects the needs of the city from this point forward, define that however you want to, whether it's capital or service to the city, public safety issues, et cetera. So you prepare a budget that is, is recommended based on the needs of the city, and then you fail to reach a, an approval on funding that budget or passing that budget, that's, in my view, would not be viewed favorably by anyone. Employees, I, I don't mean to get, go any further on that, but, you know, obviously, there are things in next year's budget that are not in this year's budget. And by adopt, I want to use the continuation because it's not really a continuation. It's, you're adopting a new budget, it's just the same one as last year. That would impact, impact things, so.
But it's until the end of the month, is that correct? So it would have through next week?
We have to June thirtieth. It has to be in Nashville. Now, June thirtieth happens to fall on a Sunday. Boy, look, this, this year, and so we, we need twenty-four, forty-eight hours or something to get it in the format that it has to be in to go to Nashville.
Councilman Wallace has a question.
Of course, you got to be in by when? You said June thirtieth?
Yes, for June thirtieth.
Really, June twenty-eighth?
And you said you had forty-eight hours to, you needed?
Well, I'm just saying that.
On the other side of the, of the rating issue, they might look favorably on the fact that instead of turning in a fund balance of twenty-two million, we came with a budget of twenty-eight million a month from now. So I think there's both sides to that.
There's, there's, listen, the rating agency process is multifaceted.
Exactly.
You know, and one rating agency might look at things one way, another, you know, another way. And I did not, I was just, you know, we've talked a lot about the metrics and the report we use to measure, so I was just presenting, hopefully, in a fair way, where we fall within the metrics that we use, so.
I just want to make sure we didn't go on what we think a rating agency is going to do, because there's two sides.
No, you're, yeah, no question. Okay, so any, any more questions about the debt service fund? Okay, moving to the next page, Capital Outlay. This is important, and we're going to take a couple of minutes to talk about what the Capital Outlay Fund, because there's been some misunderstanding about the Capital Outlay Fund, the way this is prepared. Let me, let me first say, make it, make it very clear. There is only capital outline, capital outlay items totaling six million five hundred and twenty-three thousand and five dollars that are funded and are included in this budget for next year. And I'll show you those here in just a second, exactly what they are. So another way of saying that is there's, there's only, the only capital items that are being asked to be approved in this budget ordinance are capital out, capital items that have a funding source. that are being asked to be approved in this budget ordinance are capital outo- capital items that have a funding source. So to help you understand that even a little bit more clearly, the capital items that, um, have been requested uh, through the budget process and have gone through review by the mayor's office and others, uh, in total, uh, those capital items total, if you will, eighteen million and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. The only portion of those requested items, again, that are included in this budget ordinance are items that have funding sources. And basically, there's two funding sources. There is fund balance that we expect to have going into next year that results from FY twenty, uh, four capital budget for projects that were encumbered by contractor PO and started, but are not yet finished. So since they're not finished, we have money left in, basically, in this year's budget that will carry over to pay for those. And then the other items, funding sources for next year's capital budget is, there's, uh, we'll look at them here in a second, but there's uh, three or four, uh, basically road projects, uh, T-DOT-funded projects, and we'll look at those here in just a second. So I know there's police cars come up a couple of times over the last couple of days. That's had some other items, and I want to be perfectly clear, you know, the mayor, myself, the city's not proposing a budget right now that includes a million dollars worth of police cars or whatever. Pick another, there's several items for which there's no funding source. We're not doing that. We're proposing a budget, a capital budget in this ordinance for items that have a funding source. Now.
So like police cars, paving would not be a funding?
Street, street paving is another one that's come up in, in different, different places, and just let me be clear, right now, there is no money in this budget ordinance for street paving. Now, I, I do want to comment, um, and I don't, I don't want to come across unreasonable on this. And, and, you know, I, I can't speak for every city our size, smaller, larger, but there's, I really don't know of a lot of cities that, um, so we had eighteen million dollars worth of requests. I don't know of a lot of cities that have eighteen million dollars laying around where you can pay cash, uh, or fund your capital request. Matter of fact, from a. Yeah. From, from a financial standpoint, that is not a wise, that just, that's not the way that, um, is recommended, let's just say, even by the Comptroller's Office. The, the reason for that, you experienced wild, wild fluctuations from, from, from year to year in tax rates. You know, taxes have to go up maybe, or down, or whatever. But, but the, the real point that I'm trying to make here is many of these assets that are in the eighteen million dollars that was requested are, are related to, to, to vehicles, heavy pieces of equipment, truck, buildings, assets that have a long useful life. And the way that most businesses, most cities, um, choose uh, to fund those, uh, is through, uh, uh, if you have the debt capacity, you know, through a debt issue where you, you purchase the items and you recognize the cash and expense requirements over the life of the assets. That's what the city's always done. For instance, in the Budget Committee yesterday, and Mayor, you help me here, I, I believe twenty thirty-eight, if I'm not mistaken, if we didn't issue any more debt, you know, our debt would be paid off in the year twenty thirty-eight. So we're paying, you know, through, um, a debt issue and servicing the debt for assets that the city needed, you know, five years ago, seven years ago, whatever. And that's how things work in most cities. One more comment, and this is, this, this is just a little personal commentary, but just to clear it up for everybody. So you might ask, well, how have we done it the last few years? Right? The last debt issue we had was in twenty nineteen. Well, the way we've been able to do this for the last few years is, um, couple of things. So, um, our city and other cities benefited in a couple of the COVID years. Uh, the state made infrastructure grants to cities. Um, specifically, um, street maintenance issues. Uh, we also benefited, as did many other cities in recent years, with sales tax collections. You know, back when COVID first was an issue for everybody, there was, there was really, uh, I can remember these discussions here at our city. There was fear. Oh my Lord, our sales tax is gonna ta- our sales tax revenue is gonna tank. You know, what are we gonna do? Well, just the opposite happened. Because of all the recovery money and incentive money circulating in the economy and panic buying, you know, we had two or three years, let's just say, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, basically. Uh, or maybe twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I don't know. Uh, where we had unprecedented sales tax growth and revenues. And I think our city used, you know, rather than just sitting on that, you know, I think our city used that wisely. And you, some of you all may recall, in recent budgets, uh, there's usually been a transfer from the general fund, where the sales tax revenue is, right? From the general fund to the capital outlay to help fund street paving and other capital projects. In fact, the year that we're in right now, FY twenty-four, uh, there's, there's two, two million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, something like that, that's budgeted in the general fund to be transferred to the capital outlay fund to help fund this year's capital budget. Well, that sales tax growth and those grants have dried up. So, I don't, Council, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to take this time and thank you for all the information you've given us this morning. Uh, I think it's good information. You've cleared up some good things, and there was some more things to talk of, I mean, to talk about as a council, but I would like for us to make a motion to have a work session again, for us to come back together, uh, to get our department heads opportunity to look at it. And, um, I think we got enough time. I know it's a tight time to get it in, but I think to at least get them a lot of opportunity to get some more things, um, to bring back to us, to give us an opportunity to make a better decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I would like to, uh, clarify and go in on his motion that this needs to go back to Budget Committee, but we have to have a work session.
Add on to his motion. He's got a motion on the table. You can't add on to his motion.
I want to help and, uh, clarify. So would, Mr. Dodd, would you finish clarifying then, make the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we just take it back, have a work session, uh, as a group, and get the Budget Committee to take another look at it, and just, because I think we got some things clarified today that was questioned. Uh, and come back and, so we can make a better decision on what we're gonna do.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussions, I, I will say, Council, that our, our department heads are here today uh, to answer questions, and so if you want to use this time today to ask them questions, so you can make, get some additional clarification on some of these issues here, um, I wouldn't, they're prepared today, and, uh, they're here, so I'd encourage y'all to use that time as well in addition to other time to do that. There's a motion, second, further discussion on that.
I want to ask, well, what's the time, the timeframe for all this? The, uh, budget has to be in if we pass one by June one, July one, and the day is the, what, twentieth? So how, how would that work? If we, if we, uh, delayed it or whatever, what's the proposal and support the time? We have to give notice, give notice?
No, we're, so here, here's the way that would work. First off, there has to be two readings of a proposed budget ordinance. Uh, there's one today, and there will have to be one more. Uh, that's currently scheduled for a week from today, but that would, adequate public notice, that could be whenever. Um, if, if that helps any.
No, I'm talking, taking to what Councilman Dodd said about delaying it today, how could it be done in time?
We have six days, six business days.
So how, how could that be, uh, worked out in order to give, you have to give public notice again, wouldn't we?
We, we've already given public notice for, for the, the June twenty-seventh, so if that changes, we would need to adjust that notice. And there'd have to be time for, whether it's, uh, Budget Committee, or whether it's a council work session, you know, to work those, uh, that time requirement in the schedule as well.
Can we do it with the time period? Can it be done with the notification?
If we, if we agree to it, we've got Thursday's meeting that's already public notice.
And then we can put out another one for next week.
Let me, can, can I?
Yes, sir.
And this is somewhat uncharted ground for me, uh, but at, at Thursday's meeting, that's scheduled a week from today, we would, we would need to bring a second budget ordinance, so, um, we would need it worked out prior to that meeting.
Realistically, if we do this, which I'm in favor of doing it, we're gonna have to do some, not a continuing, but a carryover of this budget. Would you say that's correct?
We, we have, we have to have a budget, so I'll say it that way.
Because you have to have, what, what's, like, what's the timeframe on to budget, to publish the budget ordinance? There's more than just forty-eight hours to do that.
Um, it, it is, um, it's, um, um, that's the reason we did enough public notice on both. It's, it's at least a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of a week and, and, you know, frankly, public notice, we put it on our website, but, um, to be um, sure about what we're doing, uh, we posted, and, uh, this year, we posted it in the Jackson Post. So it's at least a week. They only publish on Thursday. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I could before, and I don't want to get out of line or anything. But I do, I really do think it would be best that before the council considers the proposals that are, motions that have been made, gi- give me two, five minutes to get through the rest of the ordinance. Is that okay?
You go with Council?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'll move really quick, because there's, there's a couple of pages on here that I think are important. So, um, just, just basically, you look at page seven, you see the ARPA fund at the bottom. So what's in FY twenty-five basically represents, uh, you've been working with the purchasing department on this. So, uh, this, this repremen- represents items that were included in the original spin plan, have been amended by various budget amendments over the year, but they are yet to be encumbered by a purchase order or a contract. So those items are automatically just rebudgeted for next year. And the revenue, we can only recognize the revenue when the money's expended, and we have through the end of twenty twenty-six to spend the money. Does that make sense?
Just for clarification, the six point one million, can some of that money be redirected? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm not suggesting that. What I'm saying is, the six, the six point one million, uh, were items that were included in the original spin plan. The original spin plan has been adjusted some through the years, through the budget amendment process. That's really all I'm saying.
So, so the question, is there any money left there if the council decided to put it on something else that could be done?
There's no, there's no money left that was not included in the spin plan originally.
So when it included in the spin plan, does that set it to where it cannot be touched?
No, we can amend the spin.
So, so how much of that could we touch if we wanted to?
Well.
And these are unencumbered, correct?
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to look, because our, our spin plan is limited to ten million total on loss revenue, which would go into operations. So we have to look at what we haven't encumbered and what we haven't POs for, to be able to see what we can.
Well, and that'd be a good number to have before we vote on the budget, yeah.
On page eight, very quickly, this is important, uh, section two, Comptroller's Office requires us to identify our expected fund balances at June thirtieth or twenty-four that would be available for FY twenty-five use if necessary. That's what that is. If you look at page nine quickly, capital budget items, so they ask, it's, this, this format requires us to list them in two categories. What we historically here at our city have called carryover items. Those are in, at, in the top box there in section four. Uh, new items are in the bottom box, section of, um, of section four. So as I mentioned earlier, all of these items have funding sources. Either carryover funds from this year's budget, or grant funds that we expect in next year's budget. So the new items would be T-DOT multimodal two, a Safe Street grants, and an energy efficiency grant.
Could you take a minute and explain the homeless shelter funding?
Yes, I can explain it. So, um, so I understand we have, we have a, uh, a guaranteed contract now, three point four million dollars. Uh, there was, um, uh, an original budget, and I'm rounding these numbers a little bit, for the homeless shelter of, uh, one point, between one point four and one point five. I don't remember exactly what, what the number was. Uh, in this proposed budget for this new year, there is a two point two million dollar transfer that's budgeted from the general fund to the, uh, capital outlay fund, similar to what I described. We've done the last two or three years with the capital budget, so.
Then there's a grant from the, for one point three million.
Well, um, whatever the number is.
Okay, so a one point three million grant and a two point three million, give or take, from general fund.
Yeah. One point seven, resist the unexpected.
Yeah, most paid part of it, yeah.
So of this, three point five or six million, give or take, how much of it has been spent?
Uh, the, um, I guess it would be whatever the original grant amount was, which I think was.
So less than four hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
All right, of the, of the rest of it, how's that divided up? How much is that's grant money?
Well, again, it was one point four to start with. We spent three or four hundred thousand. I, I'm rounding those numbers. I don't have them in, in front of me.
And have we obligated ourselves for that?
My understanding is we've, we have signed a guaranteed maximum price contract with the contractor, and we've also signed grant agreements.
Okay, so back, how much of the total project is being paid for by grant money? One point seven million? Okay, and this grant is one point three?
That's what's left over.
Okay, so, so four million was spent, four thousand was spent roughly on that. Okay, good. How much is required as a matching fund, if any?
On, on the grant?
On the, on the grants with the homeless shelter?
Well. I mean, this, I, I, I don't know that number, but I do know that this is, this is a grant, this is a, uh, my understanding is this is a city, CDBG grant to begin with. I mean, it's our own, it's our, it's our CDBG money.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the, the process, the process was defined, you know, with HUD to get approval to use our, some of our CDBG grant money for this homeless shelter, basically, so.
Yeah, there's not a, like, required match, just want to clarify that. When y'all signed the guaranteed maximum price contract in May, you knew at the time that we had one point seven million dollars in grant funding. You knew what the cost was, so you committed to funding whatever the amount is. I mean, I could pull out a calculator and, and run it, but two point four, maybe it's about two million dollars, I guess. So it's not required match for the grant purposes, but for the budget of the project that we committed to in May.
So I, would, would I be correct in saying that if the council chose to do so, we could take about one point five, one point seven million dollars and redirect it to something else?
You already signed up to pay for it, and.
I'm sorry?
You already committed to pay for it in May, when you signed a contract.
We'd have, we'd have to talk to the people and, and discuss those contracts, obviously, but it's no legal thing other than the contracts, is that correct?
I mean, I would have to ask our attorneys that, but that is my understanding, is we would.
Reason being, I don't want to change, I don't want to change contracts. I don't want to do that, but if, if we, if, 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 if we have made a mistake, I'd rather correct it. And I think that's what we need to look at and see. Is that the best place we can spend our local tax money, when we've got all these other pressing issues, for a twenty-three person at a time, needed, needed service? I'll get, I'll, I'll agree with that. So what I'm asking in, in a roundabout way, could we take this and make one point five million dollars and say that's the project? But anyway.
I, I'm just saying, if you do that, we won't have a homeless shelter.
Why, why can't we have a one point four five million dollar homeless shelter?
Uh, we went through three years of redesigning this. I'm not the contractor. He's not here today. The building that he designed is the, is the lowest cost of what, of what we can have.
Another reason to put this budget off.
Okay, y'all are elected to make this decision, but.
When the city signs a contract, it's a promise that's enforceable by law. If, if we decide not to fulfill that contract, there are consequences enforc- If, if we decide not to fulfill that contract, there are consequences enforceable by law. There are also negotiations, renegotiations, whatever, but if we say we're not gonna pay you, I don't think it would require a lot to predict that that would be considered a breach of our contract. And so the mobilization costs, the acquisition costs, the preparation costs, whatever those are, would be things that if I was the contractor's attorney, I would list as my damages.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Better way to, uh, spend taxpayer money than actually having a shelter.
So I've given, been given about thirty seconds to consider this, so it's worth thirty seconds of my time. And if you want a more analysis, I'd be glad to.
We would. I wouldn't jump, I wouldn't jump into this. I'd like to point out, these contracts we signed are with companies we have an extremely good relationship with. And I think they would work with us. It costs us money. I'm, I'm just throwing it as a possible option whenever I think about the, the money we need in these other projects, and I see this huge increase in the budget looking everywhere.
I mean, I like Larry, but, I mean, I like Richard, but if he doesn't pay me for something that we've got a contract, I'm gonna get him. We have a good relationship.
I mean, there's been a lot.
Come back to you, okay?
Okay, go ahead.
I think we're getting a little bit in the weeds. We had a motion on the floor. I think that it should be clear to all of us that we need time as a council to have had and to have a work session.
Correct.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion on that?
Yes, please.
There is a time constraint that Mr. Arnold has described. I was involved in the, uh, budget, the last-guys budget, your first budget, where there was not a compliance or that, or a threat of non-compliance. And we talked to the controller, and I felt like I had been kept out of school by the principal who had a large paddle behind his desk. I, I don't want to go there again. So if we have a way to resolve the unresolved issues, we need to focus on how to do it timewise. We don't have to end council. We could adjourn council to a specific date and time. That way, everyone that's here and interested in this will know of the new meeting. That's public notice. We can also supplement that the traditional ways. So you could adjourn the meeting if you want to have, in the meantime, additional discussion in public, and then return whenever that, uh, specific date and time would be. So just a suggestion is how to get our homework finished in time. Otherwise, we're gonna get a failing grade.
Well, I'll make a motion.
We already got a motion and a second on the table.
Do I need to?
Yeah, go ahead. I forgot about you, just.
I just think it's really important. I have one more thing on the, on the, on the orders. I think it's critical because it's been, it's been, been misrepresented publicly and some misunderstanding, the tax rate. So I want to be very clear, on page ten, uh, of this document, the tax rate that's proposed is the same as the current tax rate. One dot, one point six one one four. Now, the allocation between the general fund and the debt service funds, we discussed earlier, that does change. Okay, just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Busman.
Well, I was just gonna echo what several of the council people have said already. We have not been given adequate time to sufficiently go through this, and to make a rushed decision for the city is premature to me. And so I think that we needed to have the work sessions. I mean, we have four people, four or five people new on council who've never been through a budget process. And it should have been, and it's appropriate, if we need the time, I mean, I know we're on time constraints, but that's not on us, and we're provided something to make a huge decision for the city, and I don't feel comfortable doing that. So if we, as a council, can look at our schedules, and we will certainly try to be able to meet together next week. If we can, if it's appropriate, I know, um, Mr. Bobby, you mentioned it's not favorable to go through and continue with the current budget, um, but if it, if we had to, which, again, I'm not asking to do that, but because of the time restraints, you know, we may not have an option. Could we amend the current budget if we needed to, to, instead of, um, passing the new one to give more time to change? Like, if we had to continue with this budget?
If you amend this budget, that is the new budget.
Well, no, I'm saying if we don't pass this new budget right now, and we had to continue with the current budget, could we look at, if we needed to make some amendments to the current budget until we can pass the new budget? No?
My understanding is, is more along, along the lines of what, um, city attorney stated earlier. I think it would be a two-step process. You'd have to adopt, adopt the current budget as a budget, and then once you get in the new year.
All right, so let's, let's see, let's see if we can do this. We got a motion and a second on the floor, so let me just, another pop quiz, Louis. If, if, if the vote to table for the work, you said postpone for the work session, could we recess, be the term, we already have department heads here. Could we recess into a, we got, we got two other items that we do have to discuss. Knowing that recess, then while the department heads are here, have the preliminary, you know, Q and A for the department heads just so they can get some questions asked and answered, then recess for Monday or Tuesday with plans to work on that next week?
If, if you went from council meeting to a council work session, all in public, then you've noticed anyone who's interested at what we're gonna do, what we're gonna talk about, and as long as the discussion is in the open to the public, to the media, you really haven't started a new meeting. You just changed the purpose. And, and sort of agree that may, may have a vote at a later time and date. The important thing is, once you've noticed the meeting, if you end that meeting, you've got to comply with all the notice issues. If you recess or adjourn to a specific date and time that you announced now, you are continuing at a, at a different time, but with the public notice.
May we make an amendment to Councilman Dodd's to recess and make a date for next week?
I don't know that it has to be part of the amendment. I think we can, we can determine that without the motion, the motion's to postpone.
Well, you could do that at the end of this, today's work session, if you wanted to, for example.
But we still have the work session.
Yeah, we can, yeah, because they're all here. I want, I mean, they're here, we ask questions.
I mean, I have a job that I have to get to, and I've already rescheduled, so I, I mean, as much as I would love to be able to stay, I mean, I've already had.
Can we do it in the morning?
I mean.
Mm-mm, no, we can't. It'll be a new meeting. No, recess, yeah, 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 yeah.
Go forward without me, but, I mean, I just, I hate to.
No, hold on, I think we're getting down way far in the weeds now. If we're recessing on different days here. We have, we have our, our department heads here. I mean, the plan was even if, without a recess, they were gonna be here to be able to answer questions, so the time allotted for them in, in our meeting was still gonna be open-ended. So if the vote wants to happen, we can, we can recess, cover the two other items, not recess, I'm sorry. Vote on that, cover the two other items, then we can recess for that for another date, and then go into question and answer work session piece for department heads. Did I say all that right?
And remember, it requires two votes, two meetings, two votes.
Mm-hmm, right.
So we have notification for the second meeting for next Thursday. So it allows us to massage this budget or the old budget or, and still meet all the guidelines, Bobby, for us to.
We had to vote on the budget twice, and so we had to have, you couldn't, there's, there's no timeframe unless we.
If we, if we do a first approval.
If you don't vote today, you've gotta meet and vote two more times.
So when we recess, it can't be to continue it the next day.
No, we, we can continue it, you know, we can decide what's best to come back tomorrow. I mean, if, but there's changes in numbers, then we gotta give them time to be able to change the numbers and change the ordinance to present it back, and so.
What might it be, I mean?
We need, if we're gonna change anything, we need to really honestly have it done tomorrow at the complete latest. So he has time for the ordinance, right?
No.
We, we do have, we do have to have time to make the changes. We, we can make the changes pretty quickly. I mean, we, unfortunately, got good at that.
Bobby, by the way, thank you.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
I can just say one other thing. The question you're asking is, I don't know if I'm confused, you're confused, but I think we both may be. But I look at it as we get report cards for last fiscal year. Next year, July one, we get a new report card. We can't use the work from last year to fill requirements of next year. And it's easier next year to fix maybe some mistakes or adjustments. Having a new budget presented to the controller on time is amendable as many times as, as the council wants to look at it again. Not having that then sends us into a different track, if you will.
Well, just one, one, one other piece, just to get it clear. So once the council approves a budget, and we send it to the comptroller's office according to their timelines, they have to approve the budget, and you, as a council member, will get a letter, the mayor get a letter, that the budget has been approved or not been approved. And so there, there is a, there is a final step to, to final approval of the budget, if that makes sense. So, and, and I don't, I don't know what happened in twenty nineteen and.
It was new council. It was left for us to vote on it when we came in.
I think, I think, no, I think what, what Louis is talking about with the, with the previous council.
So four more years.
Postponed.
So, you were sworn in after the budget was due, right?
Yeah.
Can we do the recess and come back on?
All right, so let's, so we got, we got to vote on the motion just to recess, and then we'll determine as we get to the end of this piece, the date. So let's, no more discussion on that motion and second than, um.
Would you re, repeat the motion, please?
Don't you want to repeat the motion?
I like to make a motion to recess, to do a work session, get more information, uh, and get clarification on it.
Okay, that's the motion. That's the second on the motion. Counsel, please vote.
Well, I'm, I'm still.
Counsel, don't vote.
I, I want to know, this is what I want to do. Since, since we all here, whatever we do, recess, whatever we call it, I want to be able to talk to the department heads while we're here now, because I don't believe in putting stuff off if you can do it now. So I'd like to hear from them to get my concerns answered. So whichever way we do it, I wanted to include that, the way we can do it now while we all here, to talk to the department heads, to get clarification on certain things in the budget.
Another option would be to, for, just for the time being, to rescind the motion, let the department head speak, and then determine at the end of that if there needs to be a motion to postpone or not.
No.
And we've already called for a vote, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, counsel, please vote.
Six, six yes, one no, and abstain.
All right, so what we'll do is, we'll get through the second reading items, and then we will determine a date to come back and have the first reading to resume the meeting, uh, from the recess.
The motion technically should say, I move that we adjourn at eleven o'clock today and reconvene at this time, this place, and this date, so that we are in public, giving the notice of when we will continue the discussions.
I make a motion to. We can adjourn. Tomorrow.
When we doing it? That's what we need to know first.
Or can we go later today? Yeah.
No, I'm not comfortable with that.
For a work session.
We can do the works, the work session convene, we can get done with this meeting, adjourn for the time being, do the work session since we're already here, and then we can, we can determine a time to reconvene to actually.
For the first reading.
Officially have the first reading.
Okay. Okay, we just passed.
To a.
I mean, we've, we've done something to us. Help us.
What you passed was, was not complete enough to express the will of the majority. I think to express the will of the majority.
So do we need to rescind that vote?
Date, time, no, you just need to add date, time, and place.
Okay. All right, can the mayor not do that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll remind council that we are in public, and we have our attorney here, and let's take his advice and do this correctly.
So does it have to be, question, does it have to be a motion from the council to determine the next time and place? Or can that be something we just, you know, say at the end of the meeting as the public notice?
I, I don't feel comfortable saying we've complied with the Open Meetings Act if we don't.
Unless the motion.
In the, in this motion, inform everyone when, where, and what, you know, what time.
I mean, can y'all come back here tomorrow? You know, I mean, so we can get it last week. I mean, let's do it. We gotta do it. I mean, I think we need to go ahead on.
So, so, so we can, we can continue after we adjourn this meeting with the work session today, and then we can come back tomorrow at nine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that, is that, is that a motion, councilman, to, to come back tomorrow?
I mean, I, I have stuff that I have to require to do for my job, and I have something tomorrow at nine AM that I can't get out of.
That still really doesn't.
I'm sorry that.
Give us enough time to review, uh, correct? I mean, that's what you're saying. It doesn't give us enough time to review.
What she said, can we do ten o'clock?
I have something from nine to twelve.
Can we do twelve o'clock tomorrow?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
I mean, and then I can work through the weekend. I, I mean, but I know you guys can't, so.
Can we do one o'clock? If everybody, okay with one o'clock?
No. No, I don't got a little problem with that one.
So that's the thing, I mean.
Well, Mayor, I think you should set a time at once and come, come.
It just needs to come down to the time is set and who can make it.
Yeah, who can make it, yeah.
All right, let's do this. Let's do this. Let's do, well, I'll, we'll need a motion for this, but my recommendation is that we can, like I said, have the work session today, come back at Monday at nine o'clock.
And you know, we, we, we can include, uh, Saturdays as well. We just don't operate Monday through Friday.
And I think we can.
There's a video being made of this meeting, and would be made at the work session. If you couldn't stay for the meeting, you could get the video, I think, and see, see what was discussed, if that would help.
Yeah, I mean, I can do Monday too.
You can do Monday at nine?
Yes, I'll just reschedule.
I'll make a motion for Monday at nine.
Second.
I'll be out, but.
We'll make, mostly, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, a motion and a second for, to, to reconvene the meeting, uh, Monday at nine, once we adjourn today.
I got a motion. I'm second.
Correct, we got a motion and a second. All right, any discussion on that? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed seven to. Motion passed, motion passed six to one oh and one abstain.
Okay. All right, so we'll get done with this. We'll adjourn for the day, move into work session, and then we'll reconvene at nine on Monday, okay? All right.
And it's a public work session.
Yes, public work session. Yeah, we're gonna, Marcus, continue to stream, um, the meeting, we'll adjourn the official meeting and the work session. All right, second reading, item one, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the Official Code of the City of Jackson, Title XI Municipal Offenses, Chapter Five, Offenses Against the Peace and Quiet.
Motion, second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two, proposed budget amendment, general fund to recognize revenue from abolishing the X eighty-five TIF, two million, two hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars.
A motion.
Second. A motion, second. Any further discussion?
Well, a legal attorney here asked the question, we can still make a motion next meeting to move this to fund balance in the debt service if we like. This is, this is money that just dropped on us from heaven. We were not planning on it, and I'd, I'd like to see.
So to answer your question, yes, a motion can be made to move it to fund balance, yes.
Yes, all, all you're doing now is recognizing the revenue.
Right, right, I just wanted to clarify, okay.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, so no more official business with the council. We will adjourn this meeting until nine o'clock Monday morning, and then we will move into our public work session. All right. Party break, okay.